A big thanks to Betty and Chris and George for coming and attending. It was great. And I guess I should say thank you also to Radio Redux because they did a great job for it. And the city manager and I got to go out and play in that again one more time.
It's like the last time.
Yeah, I think it's the last time. Three times is enough.
I think you both deserve an Obie.
What does that mean in that case? I don't know. I also want to thank Isaac from our staff for we did the sort of welcoming of the Great Blue Heron over on Aggett and 13th on Saturday morning as well. And they had, people brought flowers to put in the heron and they had a mecca made a big, a lei to put around the neck of the heron to welcome it to our community. So it was a big day altogether for us. There was also the Library Foundation Dinner that evening and I want to thank them for their continued work on our behalf. And so lots of great things this weekend. George, you have anything you want to add to the mix here?
No, it was, actually it was a lot of fun downtown. The music was really good. It was a good, pretty well attended and the play was fun. Enjoyed, it was just a good.
If anything else you want to report on?
Well, are we going to do our committee research?
Yep, that's what we're doing.
Okay. Well, it's been so long since I've done one, it's kind of hard to know what to select of all the activities that we've, I've been doing. So I'll just focus on a couple of things. Metro Waste Water Management Commission initiated a biogas utilization study. The water pollution control facility is going to do a major overhaul of its generating engine in 2015. And that's one of the main users of the methane that is produced from the anaerobic decomposition of the solid waste. So the study is going to look at options to how to best utilize the biogas. Currently, they use 80% of what's produced and they flare off 20%. So they're looking, does it make sense to make other investments to recapture that 20%? And does it make sense to actually, they could increase the production if they started feeding in what they call fog, fats, oils and grease, fog. That would require a little bit of an investment, but it might be worth it. So they're just looking at different options, the study is, and we should hear back in January or February with preliminary results of that are. One possible use of increased production could be for power fleet vehicles for the commission, but perhaps for the city too. I mean, it's something to look at in the future. So that's, that's one thing. We toured the biocycle farm. I've driven past it a million times. I've never actually walked around on the ground. It's fascinating. They're getting ready, the harvest is scheduled for 2015. So the commission, a few months ago, I think I reported, they sent out requests for information of potential proposers. This is in advance of a request for proposals. So just to help them better learn, you know, they're not really in the wood in this wood product industry, so it was to help them better understand what the requirements were and what the expectations were for people who might utilize, you know, the product. And of course, the highest use would be for milling lumber to make musical instruments as a possibility, boxes, things like that. The lowest value probably would be to chip it up and burn it, you know, in a generator for electricity. So the request for proposals will be sent out in advance of next fall. But they gained a lot of useful information with the request for information. And then McKenzie Watershed Council, I'll just briefly a couple of things. The several partners in the council are working on a plan to create a McKenzie River Interpretive Center at the old Fish Hatchery in Leburg, the one that's on the kind of the north end of the lake you turn off there. That's owned by the county and the county has agreed to lease it to them for $1 for 99 years. So that's a pretty good deal. So they've divided into several subcommittees and are, teamed with a woman in Portland who's actually created several of these things. She's volunteering her time. And it would focus on, you know, early history of the area, which would be, you know, Native Americans and the trappers, Donald McKenzie. Natural history and hydrology of the region, like why is that river there and what makes it so unique? And then the fish, of course, the fish and the fishermen, the fly fishers and the river guides and, you know, so it sounds pretty cool and their, their subcommittees are meeting and they'll come up with some good ideas in a couple of months. And then we had our yearly retreat and kind of reviewed the accomplishments of last year and there were quite a few. There was lots of habitat restoration and side channels and streams leading and feeding the McKenzie. Greatly improved fish habitat, a lot of repairing and shade projects, cool the temperature of the river. Lots of educational outreach and involvement with high school and middle school kids in water quality testing. Kids are learning how to do that. And then finally, you kind of looked at projects to do next year and one proposal was a tour of the Fish Hatchery, which may sound funny, but I never, I never had been to the Fish Hatchery before and I went with my third grader about three weeks ago and I was one of the chaperones for the class. I don't know how many people in this room have never been to the Fish Hatchery, but if you have not, I urge you to go during the run. And I think the Chinook's still running. It's unbelievable how those fish come all the way back after five years in Alaska and find a ladder, a concrete ladder with water flowing and it this wide, they go back to their home. And it's just pretty amazing, so.
So just to remind you.
I say, go, go visit the Fish Hatchery. It's really fascinating.
Just to remind you that our time.
Sorry. Too much to report.
Well, it's kind of interesting that George talks about sending out the RFPs for the tree farm, because when I first came on the council, I was on NWMC board for the first five years I was on council. And my first trip out there, you could actually see over the tops of the trees, the small section of land that they planted in trees. So it's, it's really come a long way and it's a worthwhile project, not only for the, if there's any monetary gain from selling the wood, but what the whole purpose of that is, is to basically kind of cool down the water and put the effluents back for the crops. On Thursday night, the 25th, it's coming Thursday at 7:00 at Sheldon Community Center, I believe it's Cal Young and Northeast Neighbors are sponsoring and maybe the other, what's the other neighborhood association, one over in Far West?
On the Far West, Good Pasture.
The Good Pasture Neighbors. I think all three of them are sponsoring a candidate forum for state representative for District 13. That's at the community, Sheldon Community Center. Immediately following that will be the Cal Young Neighborhood Association meeting and hopefully Mike and I both will be able to make it. 4:00, starting at 4:00 at the Fairgrounds on that same day is the Chamber of Commerce Business to Business Expo. And as usual, I've signed up for the 4 to 5 o'clock slot, so I'll be out there from 4 to 5. So, and I think that's about all I've got. I do have a Travel Lane County Board meeting Thursday, Thursday afternoon. It's going to be a busy Thursday. I don't know if you've seen or heard on the news, but Travel Lane County has launched its Geocaching in the McKenzie Valley area, up the Highway 126 area. Not being a real techie type person, I'm not going to try and take part in that because I'll probably get lost. But go to the Travel Lane County website, it'll have all the, all the information for the Geocaching. It's kind of a front of that. If you've never done one, you should at least try it.
Thanks, George. Betty?
Thank you. You just reminded me of something. There's also a candidates forum at Friendly Neighborhood Thursday night, 7:00. And I, Friendly Neighborhood has become a part of my ward since redistricting. A little bit of Friendly Neighborhood is now part of my ward. The most exciting thing I've attended lately, well, I don't know which was the most exciting, the birthday, the city's birthday party was really great. We have two talented people sitting right here, Kitty and John, the mayor and the city manager, I should say. And the, I was at the naming, the naming of the Kalapua Bridge Audit, which was pretty exciting. David Sonnigson, who's appeared before us a number of times to talk about that, was instrumental in getting the name and was also one of the speakers there. It was, at the beginning of the ceremony, a bald eagle flew over, which really got a lot of oohs and ahs. And just as it closed, a red-tailed hawk flew over, just as if they were on schedule. That was, it was an interesting, it was a good reminder that we, as one of the speakers said, it's where the Indian, the natives used to be. And he said, "We are still here." And sometimes we forget that they're still here. There's several things from constituents I'd like to bring up. The weatherization audit for, at the sale of a house, some of these things, I don't know whether we would do a work session or what, but you remember Bob Cassidy brought that suggestion to us, that it'd be one more thing added when a house changes owners. Oh, I'm interested in knowing whether I should request a work session to discuss that. Then you all heard Ellen Nelson talk about camping, and I brought that up too, camping after a tailgate, so that all those intoxicated people don't have to go out on the road. And again, I wonder if we need a work session if we're going to discuss that. And I'll, I hope to hear about that. We mentioned before, well, this came up at, maybe I had the wrong name there. I think not, no. The walk light, a lot of people are asking for across 30th and, and city manager, you said that we didn't need a work session to discuss that, but can that be done?
I'm sorry, can you say, I was taking a note on your other, can you mention that?
A walk light across 30th Avenue near the, near Camus Ridge School, which used to be Harris School.
I'll follow up. It seems like we've put some stuff together on that, so I can follow up.
I remember I asked at a recent meeting, did we need a work session? You said you would check on it. And then since then, someone asked me about a light at 24th and East Amazon. If any of you have bikes down there, when you go from Amazon, in Amazon Park when you cross, going toward the high school, there's a pathway, but there's no light. And in the dark, it's rather dangerous for pedestrians and bicyclists. So I'd love to know about that also. Do we need a work session or could we check on that? Thank you.
Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. As I said already, I'll just add that a week ago, I had the opportunity to attend the Lane Economic Committee meeting, the monthly meeting over at ElCog, which for those who don't know, is a multi-jurisdictional group that deals with economic development in our region. We were fortunate enough to have, as a, as a part of the day's discussion, a panel discussion with Rick Ray from Seneca Sawmill, Steve Swanson from Swanson Group, and John Murphy from Murphy Company come and talk about regional economic and employment issues with related to the timber industry. Of course, the timber industry is still the region's largest employer. And so their unanimous kind of message to us that the greatest barrier to any kind of increased employment opportunity in that industry today, it still revolves around timber supply. And especially, and we, they spoke at some length about the details of timber supply on national forests. They also mentioned that, that when asked what we, as regional electeds or as regional agencies could best do to help the industry, their response was workforce development, aside from any help that could be done with regard to timber supply. The industry is automating at a rate that needs considerable skills these days, so that was one of the other issues they mentioned. There's quite a bit more, which I'd be happy to share with all of you, but it was, it was a good opportunity to hear some specific needs from that industry group.
Ellen?
Yeah, on the, on the tree farm, the original intent of that was, of course, the effluent from the wastewater treatment plant. And that was by far the cheapest alternative of any of the alternatives they looked at when you guys made that first decision. So it starts out as a winning proposition by saving everybody money, that's in the district, which is everybody in the metro area. And then any revenue that we get off of the harvest of the trees, regardless of whether it gets chipped or turned into furniture, is just gravy on top of that. So that's, it's all in all, it's a really good, excellent program. And nobody in my household had anything to do with it. Sustainability Commission attended both. We did a Saturday morning retreat on the 29th and worked on our work plan and then finished off the work plan again on our last Wednesday Sustainability Commission meeting. And we will be coming back to the council, I don't think it's actually scheduled, but the 13th, but before Thanksgiving, and talk about that.
It is scheduled.
It is scheduled.
Okay.
It wasn't in the last intended working plan. So we'll be coming back with the work plan to discuss with the council, the Sustainability Commission's work plan. MPC, the mayor and I said on that, we've talked about the, more recently, mostly about the livability, Lane Livability Consortium, the work that's going on there. And we got a briefing here at the council as well. And then also the scenario planning for greenhouse gas reductions and how that work is progressing. We have a new project manager on that and we'll establish a MPC steering committee that will work with, with the new management staff on that particular project. And that'll be moving forward over the next couple of years. And it'll be very interesting to see how, what we do. The only other, only other area that's done it in the state was Metro, the Portland Metro area. And they, of course, have $90 million and 90 staff or something like that. We have no money and five staff. So they're, they obviously were well ahead. The mayor and I also met with the ASUO president, the new president, sharp young lady. And she and a couple of her cohorts, with Michael Kennison, the mayor and I, met with her and other folks about the social host ordinance and their concerns about that. Mayor and I are going to, are setting up a meeting in.
Wednesday.
On Wednesday to go and talk with the ASUO senate and, and listen to what they have to say and hear about their concerns about it. And we'll report back what we learn. Royal Hill Valley Citizens has a meeting 7:00 PM on November 14th. And Fairmont Neighborhood has a meeting on November 13th, which actually overlaps with our city council meeting because the 12th is Veterans Day and we moved it to Tuesday. So that's it.
Thank you.
And I'll miss my colleague over here to my, to my right.
Thank you.
Only one more meeting.
Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm thinking Ellen. So the thing I want to talk a little bit about is El Rapa. It has been my council assignment for the last few years. Betty was on it for many years. And there's always been a lot of conversation at this table as to whether it's a valid organization and whether or not it will continue in perpetuity. So Commissioner Bosovich actually read the enabling ordinance through the, that the state has, and he found out that the county would have to be responsible for that work. So he's pulling together a team.
Really? Not the state?
Not the state, but the county is responsible for that. And so he, so he has, so he's, he's like, oh, okay. Because they actually have no money to continue contributing and they don't have any money to hire somebody to do that work. So he will be having a meeting after I'm gone. And I'm hoping that Mayor, I will pass on some information to you, to pass on to whoever is going to be there. But it'll be good for us to have that conversation. It's kind of like starting the square one regarding where people stand with it.
We have a joint meeting coming up, right? That's part of the topic, right?
Yeah, but this is one that the county's having. They're having a work session on it.
Okay, but I was just saying that we're, council and, and the county are meeting and I'm one of the, it was a joint elected officials, right? And that's one of the topics.
Okay. Well, this is a pre-meeting to that, and so I would hope that somebody could attend it.
December 6.
I think it's in November, the other one, the one that I'm talking about. So, and El Rapa has had some, a really good success with the fireplace, wood stove exchange program up in Oak Ridge. They've really kind of met their goals around air quality improvement and it had a pretty positive economic impact to not only the local folks, but to people in Lane County, I think well over $1 million. And so I think that, I think that's really good. I really haven't been attending as many meetings and that's part of the reason that I'm leaving early is I feel like I can't continue on at the pace that is expected of a counselor to attend all, not just these meetings, but all the community responsibilities that we have. And so I don't really have too much more to report, except that I'd go to PSCC. And of course, it's budget, budget, budget that they're talking about. And no good news there, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'll just add my voice to the great 150th birthday party that we had at the Hall Center, now that I see Jan there. Big shout out to her and her.
Shout it out before, but you weren't here to hear it.
Yeah, you weren't here to hear it, so you get it again. And our two betting actors on the radio. Also, the Library Foundation Dinner was great. And our city manager has agreed to be the foundation fundraising chair for next year, which is really a very nice thing to do. Shows commitment to the city and to a library. I think that's, that's a great example of community engagement. You also have received a briefing paper from Brenda with regard to ElCog. With all of the different things going on, I think probably the overarching point that I would want to make is, yeah, you find out things that you need to do, but the most important part is you know what you need to do and you get started on them. And I am very, very encouraged and pleased at how well Brenda has hit the ground running and brought ElCog back to what I think is a much better place than it is right now. And there's still a lot of work to do, but she's got a plan in place and we are feeling much more confident that we know the situation within the organization. We know what's going on and we have a game plan to restore everything. And as she likes to call it, refocus the organization, which I think is a great term, because it honors the great staff and the people that have done good work there, but it acknowledges that there is a lot of work that needs to be done for the organization to refocus itself. She has an internal group. She's working closely with all of the different partners. She meets regularly with the executives, which is a wonderful addition to her workload. I thank you once again for allowing Brenda to leave the city and go over to ElCog. I think she's doing a tremendous job there, as you know she would. And so I'm very pleased to report that ElCog is getting back on track, moving in the right direction, and its new executive director is doing a fabulous job.
News. Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. The joint elected official meeting's on the 6th of December.
That was a good thing.
A couple of things. George, I'm glad you brought up salmon returning to the rivers. I spent the last two days on the Trask River in Tidewater until I was watching salmon return under my boat. Did manage to catch a couple of fish, which we can talk about later. The, a lot of salmon this year. A couple of things very quickly regarding the Human Rights Commission. I came back from a, there was a meeting in Florence on Thursday, on Tuesday, last week, and I came back to the Human Rights Commission meeting in time to discuss the motion that 5 to 3 we passed in this council regarding the mayor establishing a committee with council input to develop a path to end the DPSZ that would involve social services, public safety, prevention, and enforcement. That was the motion that passed 5 to 3 and I believe it, that it was, councillors Brown, Taylor, and teams that voted against the motion to form that committee. The Human Rights Commission asked me to pass along the motion, and I send it via email to everyone, but I'd like to read that motion that the Human Rights Commission passed unanimously last week. That's, the motion was, "I move that the HRC provide at least two representatives to the proposed committee concerning the downtown public safety zone and that the full HRC be invited to review that committee's recommendations and expresses opinion to city council and city manager before the council decision on the outcome." I forwarded that to the city manager and I know that each of the councillors has seen a copy of that also. So when it comes time to move forward, that is the wishes of the HRC, that they do have two members on that committee, that the full HRC review the recommendations of the committee. It passed unanimously on the Human Rights Commission. You all received a memo in your packet on Thursday from the HRC regarding the work plan and progress toward the work plan. I won't go into any details on that. We have a very detailed nine-page report on the activity of the Human Rights Commission toward its work plan. The other thing you received that came through the Human Rights Commission was the, this packet from, the cover page is the Lane County Network for Immigrant Integration Statement of Principles. And it is, it contains a resolution with a pledge of support for the Lane County Networks, their attitude or their feelings toward the integration of immigrants into the community. You each have a copy of this. I won't read the details of it right now, but this is something that the Human Rights Commission is very strong about, bringing this before the council, for the council making a decision on whether or not to support this resolution. And that's something that you'll see, I would anticipate, before the end of this calendar year.
Now, I was going to bring that up if you didn't, so I'm glad you did, because I just wanted to remind you that it's in your last week's packet and we'll need a counselor to bring it forward within, probably within the next couple of meetings that we have.
I will be that councilor.
Okay. Good. Great. Terrific.
So that, so you've seen that in your, in your packets. So the HRC has been very, very busy, very good hands with Tony Yasu as the, as the chair and Ken Newbeck as the vice chair. I think that they will be continuing in the same leadership roles for the next, for the upcoming year. And I'm presuming that I will not be a member of the Human Rights Commission for the upcoming year. Thank you.
And Betty?
Workforce Partnership Board met last week and the, well, the executive committee that met last week, the whole committee will be meeting tomorrow, I think, no, Thursday. But anyway, they're really focusing on workforce, work readiness certificates and trying to, actually competing with other communities and trying to make this a work readiness community. And I thought of that when Mike mentioned workforce. But doing a lot of good work with reduced staff, like everyone else. And one more thing, City Club is having a series of meetings prior to the election on ballot measures. And I think you might find those very informative. Steve Robinson will be speaking this coming Friday. He has spoken to council before and he's very well informed and I think it'd be worthwhile to go, to attend that.
City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of things. One, to just piggyback on what several folks have said on the 150th anniversary, or birthday, that was really nice. I'll also do a shout out for Jan and Billy and several other people who did a great job. Still more going to happen in the birthday celebration, but it was, it was fun. The Library Foundation, Connie Bennett, as you know, over there does a fabulous job with the building that we're in right here and really has done a marvelous job with outreach and literacy programs and a variety of things. So she and her team are doing fabulous work. With reference to the downtown public safety committee, as you know, the motion says that the city manager will be putting together that group with council input. So if you have any suggestions on who you would like for me to consider for that committee, please forward them on to me. We'll be putting that together over the next couple of weeks and so I'm moving that forward. And then just one thing that I've started to do is I'm meeting periodically with Kerry Lieberman over at Green Hill, just to kind of check in to see how things are going with that. And from my perspective, I think they're going very well. And I know there's still opportunities for improvement, but I think they've made quite a few physical changes to the facilities that are great for the animal welfare as well as the volunteers and the staff over there. I think they're very committed to meeting the goals that we've asked them to meet. And so I'll be continually meeting with them on an ongoing basis, just to see how it's going.
I did want to mention that the Sheldon Pool's open again. So that's a big, a big deal to go for our community. And I just wanted to say, none of you had any comments about my debut with the sugar beets?
Read it on Facebook.
Okay. I think we're ready to move on to the next item. Thank you all. I'm going to.
If I, if I, just one quick follow up regarding the fish that I caught.
Yes.
Less than anybody be concerned with the population of salmon. The two fish were returned to the river and they were bullhead catfish, not salmon.
I was going to, I'm going to.
Holy cow.
I'm going to adjourn the city council work session and convene a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. And the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency will now meet in an executive session to consider real property transactions. The executive section is held pursuant to ORS 192.6602E. Representatives of the news media and designated staff shall be allowed to attend the executive session. All other members of the audience are asked to leave the room. Representative. Representatives of the news media are specifically directed not to report on any of the deliberations during the executive session, except to state the general subject of the session as previously announced. No decision will be made in the executive session. At the end of the executive session, we will return to open session and welcome the audience back in the room. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just turn over to Denny so we can give a quick overview of the topic tonight.
Thank you.
...made into an excellent outcome. And the staff is ready to stand with the council and work with the council and the community to achieve an excellent outcome. So we have a city hall that will carry us through the next 50 years to our 200th birthday. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Kristi again.
So just to remind you all, the two site, we basically have two site options, but three overall options that we're evaluating with the subcommittee. The first one is the city hall site, and the second is the E-Web site. You might recall that when we returned to discuss options for city hall in July, E-Web emerged as a, an option to evaluate at that time. And we were asked to go back and meet with the E-Web staff and to learn more about what opportunities might be available for the city at, at that site. And so we've met, since that time, met with E-Web staff several times, and they've been very helpful in looking at what we could potentially do in terms of co-location on that site. The Phase One opportunity is for up to 58,000 square feet, which reflects all of the north building and a portion of the, about three-quarters of the floor, first floor on the south building and all of the second floor. And so I just, just wanted to give you that very little update on E-Web. We will be coming back to have more thorough discussion with you all about the site options and the particular criteria as we apply them. One of the things that I do want to point out about the two site options is that they both provide for flexibility today and into the future for a combination of a phased approach and for future expansion. And so there are both viable sites and good options to be considering. Jason, can you go to the next slide? So as we begin to talk about where we're headed over the next few weeks, our goal, if you work backwards from today, today's October 22nd, if you look at the diamonds on the timeline attached and work backwards from that 28th of November, what our goal is, is to be able to provide all of you ample opportunity to provide input along the way and to stay informed as we move to having a eventual opportunity to make a decision about the site on the 28th of November. And so tonight, what we'll be doing tonight is to further discuss with you the values related to the decision-making process. And we will be using that criteria as an overlay for the more specific criteria as, that will be much more detailed and factual-based about, you know, square footage, cost, accessibility, all of those kinds of things. And the subcommittee will work on that on the 25th and the 7th, the next two dates that are upcoming on the calendar there. Return to council, full council, for another work session on the 14th. And then the, the next meeting that's scheduled with the subcommittee, we're trying to work out the date, will be sometime between the 14th and the 28th, but we'll get that nailed down. And so with that, what we'll be looking for, as if, as you listen to the rest of the presentation tonight and engage in discussion, what we'll be looking for is, is what it is that the subcommittee can provide throughout the conversations that we have with you to help you feel informed and prepared to have the opportunity to make a decision in late November. And with that, I'll turn it over to Jason.
So in our last meeting with the subcommittee, we talked about the process going forward from here to address these various meetings that are coming up. And as I was getting up to speed on this project, as well as Larry was, going through the binder, going through all of the material that's been done, it was really astonishing to me how much work has been done. And so I think as we thought about the process going forward, it was really honoring all that work that has been done and trying to build on it and have it be a framework for the work that we do here this fall. So it's really trying to make the best of that work that's been done. Also, building on the extensive work that's been done around values. What is it that we value, that the council in 2005 valued, that our community values? These core values, how can we use those to help frame up our decision that we make as well? It's important that it be a values-based decision-making process because it really gets at underlying beliefs. It's not about specific criteria that you might, may identify, and you may have specific criteria in mind, but it's really those overarching values that become the guiding framework for you as you think about this decision. It also allows you to stand back when you get, as you, as you probably will, and our subcommittee will, there's so much data and information about these choices in front of you. As that all comes flying at you, it allows you the ability to step back and say, what are our values? What, what does our community value about this decision? And it gives you something to kind of fall back on, hang your hat on. So we began looking at the work that was done in 2005, an extensive, extensive value-based decision-making process with individual counselors, where consultants spent time one-on-one with the counselors at that time, getting at their true values about where city hall should be, what it should look like, what kinds of things it should address in the future. So on the left there are the nine values that the council came to unanimous decision on as being the values that should guide the project going forward. That was then backed up by some additional criteria in 2007 as part of the master planning process. And so what was interesting for us as we look at these two is the similarities across those. Criteria on the right, values on the left, you begin to see that there are some common themes here. Planning for the future, that it be user-friendly, exercising fiscal responsibility, sustainability, environmental stewardship, these are common themes between these two. What that tells us is we're on the right track, we're getting the right values because you see these things repeating over and over again. Some additional work was done in 2005 to identify four issues that had a high level of consensus, and this was amongst all counselors again. And again, when you look at these four issues, what you see are things very similar to the values. Sustainable goals, utilizing a long-term planning horizon, addressing the components of downtown plan and how city hall fits into that. So it's just, again, kind of reaffirms that these are core values and that they haven't necessarily changed over time. So as we talked about these values with the subcommittee, they spent some time discussing each of those nine core values from 2005. And in the context of that discussion, explored whether or not anything had changed since that time in 2005. And in fact, some things had. As we know, Eugene Police Department has moved out to country clubs, so that's different than 2005. Municipal court has moved to leased space that they will be in for at least 15 years, so that's different. And we're also starting, there was some good discussion at the subcommittee meeting about how technology is changing the way the community may interface with our products and services. So do, do things that need brick and mortar now, need that 50 years from now. So it gets us in that, thinking back from the future and saying, what do we want to say about the decision that was made? So amongst all those values, there were, you know, some varying thoughts on what, what people felt strongly about and what they didn't on the subcommittee, but certainly fiscal responsibility remains a higher priority now as it did in 2005. The subcommittee asks staff to take these various values and criteria and issues and to simplify them in some way. There are simply just too many things floating around out there. So what could staff do to help simplify that? And here on our last slide is the outcome of that work that we did. Basically boiling these values and criteria down into five core values. Stewardship, identity, participation, simplicity, and Eugene at 200. These then, we would propose would become the values that you look back and you weigh the various criteria, the various facts that you'll learn about related to these sites and choices, and weigh them against these values. I'll quickly walk through these. We've included here the expression of these values. So what does stewardship mean? Stewardship means thinking about fiscal responsibility not only today, in today's dollars, but what does that look like over time in the long term, over the next 50 years or more? That it achieves efficiencies both in the building itself and in how we work as an entity. Our identity, that it be a welcoming building or property, that it reflects who we all are as a community, all aspects of our community, that this be something we can all feel reflects who we are. Open and transparent, that it represents our past or present and our future is an expression of our identity, that we honor our past but also think about where we're going. Under participation, thoughts here about making sure that the community has access, but also that they feel as though their government is accessible, that there's a connection to the community and that this be a place where we can celebrate our community, whether that be actually in person or just in general, that it's something we can celebrate. Keeping things simple, there was a lot of discussion at the subcommittee meeting about consolidation. We're going to ask our three subcommittee members to talk a little bit more, that may be something that they reflect on, that we think about what our core functions are and keep that simple as part of this discussion. And lastly, and perhaps most importantly, is Eugene at 200. How will the users of city hall 50 years from now look back on the decision that is made, hopefully very soon, about, was it a good decision? Were the right things taken into mind? Flexibility was something there was a lot of discussion about. 50 years is a long time, the world can change a lot, so we want to be flexible. And of course downtown and how it changes over the next 50 years is an important part of this decision as well. So as you saw, the subcommittee will meet three more times, two before you meet again. They're going to dive into some of the details. We will continue to bring them updates on E-Web property as we learn more. What we would like to do in the time we have left tonight, have each of the three subcommittee members just reflect quickly on their last meeting, the process that is before them. We'd like to get your feedback on these five values, see if we're hitting what we need to hit here. And then if, if you feel so moved, think about how you want to reflect on what city hall will mean as we look back 50 years from now on this decision. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to, I don't know which of the three of you would like to speak first, but we'll have each of you speak first and kind of reflect on the process.
Well, that'd be good. Each of you speak first.
Go.
Yeah. No, but, and then have the rest of you chime in on these values.
Gentlemen?
Okay, I'll start. This is kind of the synthesis of a couple hours of conversation, and you guys did a great job of synthesizing this, thank you. And making it really accessible for us to understand it. We're trying to distill down into the essence of what we wanted to see in a new city hall, and I think this captures it pretty well. And we wanted to kind of throw this out to you guys for further discussion about that. Just a couple of things that I'll hit on. And the stewardship, we've got to think about it being a 50-year building, and in that, to me personally, having it be an environmentally responsible design, a zero-energy building that's cost-effectively done can be an example of what can be done as a city government building, be very important. It needs to reflect the identity of who we are as Eugene and, and all of us in Eugene. So it needs to be a welcoming place, but it needs to be that, it has to have that kind of symbolic place for us. That is what is the city hall, but we didn't want to just forget the past and where we are today, but also look into the future. So we wanted to be able to have, the, the city hall needs to kind of embrace all of that. One of the ideas that we were tossing around, just kind of haphazardly, was, was as you walk into the city hall, maybe there's a historic museum there about the, all the different aspects of city hall and Eugene life through time, and have the last one be kind of vacant for the future. It also, and in that, needs to have a place for us to have a civic forum of participation place, a public meeting room much like this or something like that, other than the council chambers, to be able to have community events too. But then when we started talking about, well, why, why do people even go to city hall anymore? We don't really go to city hall that much to do very physical, interactive things anymore. You know, the permanent information center, the PIC Center was one of the things that we thought, talked about, but they're going to e-filing of design. So there's very few instances where you actually interact with city hall and city business unless you're, it's a very specific thing for a very small segment of populace, unless it's to do civic events or interact with city council. So that became kind of the core functions. Do we need, the, the old model, the hacker study and all of that stuff had us all in one big building, $120 million building, which wasn't going to work. And now we've kind of de facto almost taken that and spread it out all over the city. And, you know, the courthouse is, is on, on West 11th and the police department's over there, and the planning developments and the atrium building, and so we've kind of decentralized city, and public works is in a different place, and so are the fire department. So all these, everybody's in a different place, which I guess is, is a fine model. So what is it that we need to have to be in city hall, but be mindful of that, that we want to be able to have it be adaptable and flexible for changes? So we need space and ability to, to be able to plan for the future on the site. And all three of them do that, so.
Ben, I used to admire, he used to always say that if your values are right, your decisions will be right. And then one of the things that I really was appreciative of the staff for was helping us focus in on how to talk about the values of the decision-making process so that the decision we make will be a better one. And I, I really appreciate their work. I think Alan covered a lot of the details of this. For me, there was only a couple of them, because they did synthesize down a very lengthy and frankly, very complex kind of discussion. I thought it was a very good one and a high-level discussion, but hard to boil down, and they, they nailed almost all of it. There's only one under identity where it says reflects who we all are. I was trying, I think that's an effort to try and get at one of the things I was mentioning there. And for me, it was actually a little bit more of, it's, it's an issue of ownership there. It's a place that not only is who we all are, but that we all sense a stake of ownership in, not just some of the community. And by that, I mean, you know, this is a community of very diverse opinions and sentiments. There are some parts of our community that consider different parts home or downtown or, you know, I mean, so when you say downtown, some people think of Saturday Market, other people think of Oakway Center. It depends on where you are in town. So what, what I think I was trying to get at with that was making sure that it reflects a sense of ownership for everybody in our community. I did appreciate too as well, the issue of consolidation focused on community needs. That was kind of another dynamic of the conversation was, we've had a lot of conversations at council about the city, the staff, what our opinions of what, what some of the needs are that all need to be in one place, but we kind of talked about this more from what's the general public's sense of what they all need in one place for a civic center. So I appreciated that opportunity to talk about it that way as well.
I think for me, and Alan and Mike have really summarized a lot of really good points that we've talked about. This has been a very interesting and I will say enjoyable conversation because, as was pointed out, whichever way we go, we will come up with a good city hall. It's nice to be in a position where you have three choices. Any one of those three will produce a, a good city hall because one of the kind of underlying concepts that we joke about, but I think it's very legitimate is, in 50 years, when people talk about this, we don't want them to say, what were they thinking? And it sounds funny, but I think it's an important guiding principle. Because if we keep reminding ourselves, what are people going to say about this in 50 years? It keeps you grounded. It keeps you thinking in terms of, let's not make it powder blue with lace. Let's, let's kind of stick with something that's basic and timeless. And I think that's where the simplicity comes from, is the notion that we're not trying to build something that is a grand testament to some theoretical idea. We're trying to build a functional and appropriate city hall for who we are. It reflects our identity, but it doesn't reflect something that is not us. And the consolidation of, of functions around community needs, I think is also one of the most essential points. You don't have to have everything in order to be available for community needs. It's what are those needs that the community expects or anticipates a city hall to provide? And that, for me, has been the biggest shift from the original process. So much of the original process is reusable, but there are a few things that I think have shifted dramatically, and that is one of those dramatic shifts, is we do not have to build a city hall where everything is in one building. There are expectations that certain things will be there, and I think we can accommodate them in any one of these options, but we don't have to go down the road of, it all has to be there whether they use it or expect it or not. And that is a liberating idea because it frees us up in terms of what we can do. I think we can build a wonderful, creative, simple, good identified, good stewardship city hall that accommodates all those characteristics without having to spend any enormous amount of money, which is what our community expects of us. And I think for the first time in many years, we're talking about a city hall that is within our price range, and that, to me, is exciting.
Do you have anything else that you wanted to?
No.
Open it up to the?
Yes, that would be great, Mayor, thank you.
So some things that I, I'll start out by just saying that, of course, I think we, I appreciate the simple and all of that, but I think we also want to be proud of what, of what it looks like and what it represents. I think, we've talked about a lot of things, but I want it to be attractive as well, right? And, and be able to stand the test of time, and maybe more than 50 years. And multifunctional. And I guess I would say, I don't like the idea of building, of being in a building that is a subset of another organization. So it doesn't mean I take the E-Web off the table, it's just it couldn't be, in my view, it couldn't be E-Web with the city hall off to the north side as some kind of addendum to E-Web. So that, I just think we have to, have to think about all of that. And the cost effectiveness, I don't know because I heard what you said about everything doesn't have to be in the city hall, but my question is, what's the cost effectiveness of keeping us in so many places versus taking us out of some of those places and bringing us in? So some, I, I'd like to know what the, the trade-offs are between, for example, the atrium, what if, in a key downtown place, what it, what's in it for us to maybe make that space available and bring in some resources to, to us and bring those folks into a, a city hall? So just for you to think about those kind of things as well. I've got Andrea and then George.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, guys, for starting this conversation and staff. So I remember, this is one of the first projects I've worked on as counselor in 2005, and I was very impressed with the hacker group because they were just so urban and had cool hair and, you know, $3,000 suits, you know? It was just pretty, uh...
Cool hair?
They did, they had these really cool haircuts. Anyway, so, you know, I agree with the mayor, this shouldn't be a subset of another organization. You know, when we talked about bringing everybody in, it was partly my vision to have everybody kind of in the same place. I, you know, when I think about what I want my city hall to represent is, I want it to be an open, welcoming place for all my community. The building that we have now, one of the comments I remember making was that it has like its back to people, you know, like there isn't any invitingness to it now. I want our city hall to have, to be welcoming to, you know, like I just went to Riverside and my brother-in-law goes, oh, you got to go see what they did at city hall, you know? And it's like, oh, okay, you know, and this, this, you know, my, my family, is it political? You know, I won't tell you what they are. But anyway, so we went to city hall to see what, what was down there, and, and they did some new cool things. And so I want, I want, that's what I want our city hall to be. I want it to be a destination point for our community. I want it to be all where people are welcoming. I think it's not only everybody, but people of color and also youth. I think it should have a component where we bring young people down there and give them opportunities to see what people, different, different parts of the city do. Where, I'm not always going to be here, and neither are any of you, or maybe better.
Eddie, mate.
Bless her heart. But, you know, I think about, you know, what our responsibility to the future is, and we really need to be encouraging youth to get involved in this type of work. And, and I think that the way we have it set up now, it's, it's almost prohibitive, you know? I mean, it should be an epicenter for, for, for education, for, you know, for things happening. I mean, if not all of it, but at least, not like a facade or some way to be, to say, this is all of city hall. You know, this is all of what the city does, and an opportunity for people to see what, everything that the city does. So I think it should be some place that we have, take pride in. You know, one of our, this is our building, this is our city hall, and, you know, this is, this represents the city of Eugene.
George Pauling?
Well, the list that you have up there, I think is a great starting point. There's some really good values and expressions, I like those. As far as consolidation, I'm a firm believer that it should be, you know, other than for reasons, the fire department, the police department, public works yard, I believe that all city functions should be in one location. Not only for serving the public, but also, as the mayor alluded to, is saving money and renting spaces all over downtown. Also, it needs to, you have to take in consideration the functionality of the facility for our employees. They're our most valuable asset. So whatever we design, however we design it, I think it should, that should be one of the main things we keep in the back of our mind. And, you know, not everybody's high-tech, some of us still carry, you know, real day planners around. But having it consolidated, you have, and because there's so many different overlaps between the different departments, I think that the, the opportunity to face-to-face conversations to your counterparts in the other departments, I think is a very valuable asset. You know, I don't have a crystal ball, so I can't tell you what Eugene, you know, at 200 years is going to look like. I don't know what downtown is going to look like. I don't even know if downtown's going to be what downtown is now. I do think that we need to keep the connection with the current downtown. My hopes is at Eugene at 200, that the downtown is, is where it currently is. But I also think we need to keep connection with, with our, with the county and with the, with the federal offices and everything else. So I think where we are is probably a better location. A concern I have is that we make a decision and instead of 50 years from now, 10 years from now, we say, oh, we're out of room. So it has to have that flexibility, and we really have to plan for out in the future. We don't know what's going to happen. So if you're starting into a facility and, and I know this is going to hurt Mike's feelings, but if you're starting a facility that has limited square footage and you're, you're starting out with taking over part of that facility, in the future, what's going to happen? You know, where, where is, where's E-Web, the rest of E-Web going to go? So I'm not, I'm still not sold on the E-Web facility. Let's see, connections to downtown, building, and I think that was all I had to say.
George Brown?
I'm just kind of curious, what, what does staff expect to get out of this discussion that we're having right now?
The purpose of this discussion that we're having with you is as much for the council subcommittee members as it is for staff. And what we'll be doing is taking, the values will be the overarching, you know, the decision-making process for the criteria that's developed to evaluate the three site options. And what we'll do is we'll take the values discussion, and what we're hoping is, is that we're able to gather information today that helps enhance what we already have had, you know, discussion with the subcommittee members about, to make sure that it reflects things that are important to all of the council. And so we'll take that information, apply criteria to the three different options that we're evaluating, and bring back information that includes values-based decision-making as well as more of the factual criteria, the, the cost base, those kinds of things.
Can I add one more thing to that? If you think that something's missing from that list, that would be very helpful. If you think something that's on there shouldn't be on there, that would be helpful. If you agree with most of that stuff, that would be very helpful. And as Kristi said, we discussed, we would not bring back a recommendation. We would, we would do the filtering work to help get all the information back to the full council for that deliberation. We have to do this together. Yeah, otherwise it won't work.
Yeah, yeah. And I would also say too, that there's been several statements that seem to be of fact that were as yet to be determined by the subcommittee or discussed.
About, I'm going to stop this meeting at 10 after because we have to do our turnover, and that's 10 minutes into the time that we usually start. So I'm going to ask us all to be as limited in our conversations as we can, and, and George, say what you need to say, and then I want, we've got Pat and Betty in the queue.
Well, I just asked a question, then everybody jumped in.
I know.
Well, I, you know, I mean, this is fine, I can't disagree with any of those things, but I think it, just, I think it kind of heads us down a process road and away from a road of, like, let's cut to the chase, let's get a little more specific. I mean, we talked about E-Web and we talked about the two options for the current site, and we, so we've already kind of discussed a lot of these things and I, and then when I see in the, you know, the PowerPoint, this was from 2005, that was only seven years ago, they talk of a long-term planning horizon of 25 years? I mean, now, I mean, I, that's just, I'm kind of flabbergasted. Now it's out for 50 years? I don't know. I mean, a lot of us have been back east, you know, to Philly and New York, Brooklyn and Manhattan. Those buildings that are 200 years old, that people are still using them. That's a 200, I mean, I think we ought to think 100-year plan, cost. Build a facility that's going to last 100 years, 150 years. At some point, we'll outgrow it, and then we'll have to farm out space, but I think we should all be consolidated. And I like the, this, the phasing, build the ceremonial thing first and then, then move up like we kind of already discussed, so I think that'll save us a lot of money eventually, to reconsolidate everybody. I think people kind of expect that. I noticed, I just want to say one more thing quickly. I noticed, you know, in the last few weeks after the municipal court moved out, people didn't know where it was, there was a sign. I mean, I, I went to my office almost every day there for a few weeks, and I would routinely direct people to city offices. Well, where's the planning department? Well, where's public works? Where's, you know, and it's like, felt like a traffic cop. Okay, go two blocks that way and turn left and go up to the third floor and, you know, and it's just, if everything's consolidated. I think that's kind of what people expect, really. I would like to see us thinking strongly in that direction. Thanks.
Pat?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, thanks to the committee for the work that you did, you brought back a really good product and a good list of essential criteria for the building of the new city hall. I think one thing that's really important to me is that we built one that is architecturally significant and that stands out as Eugene City Hall. I'm looking at the... I'm looking at the old picture, the 1911 City Hall, and I just Googled Sheffield City Hall, which is my hometown in England, and if you look at that picture, and you look at the picture on Slide 2, oh my gosh, it's the same building. That's what a City Hall would look like. I doubt that we're going to get there, but something that is, you know, that is timeless as the mayor, I believe it was the mayor that said something that's timeless and withstands the test of time, and 100 years, George, you know, something that is going to be around for maybe until the end of my lifetime, I'm not sure. So the, so I think, and I also believe that, in something else that Counselor Poling and Counselor Brown said, that having more services in the same place, it is a little bit disconcerting that people don't know what happens at City Hall when all the things that they do concerning city government don't happen at City Hall. I'm not certain that we can address that all in one fell swoop, but moving toward a point where people come to City Hall to do city business and to see the mayor, that the Lord Mayor in some cases, I think that would be, you know, that would be the ultimate goal, is to get everything together where people who visit the city see something that is, well, that is obviously the City Hall, and I'd love to see that.
Betty?
Thank you. I think it should be consolidated, I think that's a basic thing, the parts that, that people need to use should be consolidated. And it should be democratic. I think our current, our current, our past current council chamber is very democratic, the way it's the circular thing, the way you can see in and see out, and I hope we preserve that. I think that, as Judge Poling said, the connection with the county is really important, to be near the county. I think that the atrium could be better used for what it used to be. It used to be a really exciting place with a Birkenstock store, a shoe repair store, a restaurant, a deli, a live theater, and a movie theater, and a lot of other things that was, it was.
Of course.
The Frisco's, yeah, that was a restaurant.
God bless Bob.
And one little shop with a grouchy owner who didn't want anybody to come in, and that was a part of it too. I think that should be returned, it's a neat building, it should be returned to something commercial, and anything that people need to get, need to come to should be consolidated, and it definitely should be where it is or was. Thank you. And about this 100-year stuff or 50-year stuff, if we keep talking about it, are we going to say 50 years from now or 50 years from, 30 years from now?
We started the conversation.
And I do think that we need a, we need public input before we make the final decision, and that should come soon, but not on a day when I'm not there. Thank you.
Sorry to dash through this, but at least you were often moving, and that's really good, and thank you to the committee, and we're going to close this meeting for right now.
Good.[1776.33]